I call this meeting of the Carson City School Board to order. It is August 25th. First item on the agenda is adoption of the agenda, and this is for possible action.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion by Don, second by Joe. Any discussion from the board? Seeing none, any public comment about the agenda?
Seeing no public comment.
Thank you, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda, trustee Wilkie, will you please lead us in the pledge?
My pledge will be adjourned.
The host would like you to unmute your microphone. You can press star six to unmute.
We apologize for the rude Zoom interruption during the pledge. Third item on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Are we still?
You are unmuted.
Test. All right, next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report. This is for information only. Good evening, Mr. Stokes.
Thank you, President Walker, members of the board. It's a pleasure to be with you tonight. I would like to begin, we have some special guests with us tonight. Actually, it feels like a whole new class of administrators. And we have a few folks that are not new to the position. But I would like to invite our new folks to come up and maybe stand right behind the table here, if you would. So I'm really pleased to have these folks with us here tonight. In most cases, our folks who are before you tonight are individuals who have worked with the district in a variety of different ways. They have proven their expertise, they've proven their dedication, and really have been selected from a great group of interested individuals who were trying to also get the positions that they got. So I think one of the things that really worked well for us through our Race to the Top program was there was a dedicated effort to try and build up our potential administrative ranks. And from that group of individuals, you see before you, those individuals who have risen to a high level and we're really glad that they're part of our system in the place that they are. So I am going to introduce them to you and tell you a little bit about what they've done in the past. And then I'm just going to hand the microphone here to them and give them a chance to say a few words so that you can be thinking. And if you have any questions, certainly they would welcome your inquiries. But starting right here with Ms. Gina Hoppy. Gina has worked for the school district for a number of years as a teacher over at Fritsch Elementary. And she is taking over there as the vice principal, working with Mr. Dan Brown, our newest bulldog as an administrator. And so Gina, welcome. Thanks for being willing to take on this task. And I'll give you a chance to say a few words here.
Okay. Well, I'm very excited to be here and honored that I took on this position this year. So I'm just thrilled that at this point in time in my career, I know that I can't mess it up because of everything that's going on. And I think I'm just going to add to it and make it better. So I look forward to a great year.
I was just going to say congratulations and welcome to the new position.
Thank you so much.
Looking forward to great work. Thank you.
Yeah Gina, sorry, congratulations. Can't tell who's talking.
Thank you.
But I just wanted to say thanks. I think, you know, what a great position and a great opportunity. We hate to lose you in the classroom, but I think this is, you know, this is a fantastic move. So welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Certainly, there's always that bittersweet piece when you recognize you're losing a great teacher from the classroom. But at the same time, you're gaining someone with tremendous teaching experience that can apply that at a different level.
And I was just going to say, not only congratulations, but Gina, if we've learned one thing this year, it's not to tempt fate.
True, I'll keep that in mind. Thank you, Mr. Walker.
She told me earlier today that I'd already messed it up, so she was home free. Next, just going down the line here, we have Mr. Nathan Brigham. And Mr. Brigham was actually selected back in April, right after kind of the wheels fell off the bus. But we're really glad to have Nate on board with us. And he too is a dedicated staff member. He's done a number of things in the school district, including, probably not many of you know this, he was the varsity soccer coach at Carson High School for a little while. So Nathan's been with us a long time and has served well as a reading specialist at Empire. And I believe all of your teaching has been at Empire, if I remember right. And so he'll be joining Mrs. Squires over at Empire. And they have all the makings of a great team. Looking forward to having them work together. Mr. Brigham?
Very excited that when I started my admin career, I got to start it at Empire, the only elementary school that I've worked at. Took two years off at the district office and was lucky enough to be able to go back to Empire. And kind of like Gina said, when we make it through this year, not if, when, every year after this is going to seem like a cakewalk. Because when we get through this, it'll be easy from there. So looking forward to doing the best that we can for our kiddos and in these uncertain times, trying to provide them as close to a normal education as we can.
I happened to be over at Mr. Brigham's school right around lunchtime. And he was trying to get kindergarteners established in the lunchroom. And he confided in me, he had already done his 8,000 steps. And it was still only about 11:30. So, so Mr. Brigham, whether or not you ran with the kids at Carson High School and the soccer team, I don't know. But I think you'll stay in shape doing this job. Next, we have Mrs. Susan DeRoziers. New to us, but only by a few years. Susan is working as one of our deans over at Carson Middle School. And she actually did a stint of teaching for us in the early 2000s. So welcome back. It's nice to have you with us. I always like it when some of our staff members are out getting real world experience. And so Susan did that for a little while and ran a restaurant and a catering business, I believe. And brings that world of work back to the middle school, which I think will really be advantageous for our students. Really happy to have you with us. Look forward to getting to know you a little bit better in your new role. And would like to offer you a chance to say hello, introduce yourself, maybe to a little greater extent.
Hi, everyone. It's really great to be back here in Carson City where I did start my career. I was over, as you said before, south of the border with Douglas County. And it feels really good to be chosen, to be part of the administrative team at Carson Middle School. It's been an interesting few weeks. But I think that we are doing the best we can. And I think that things are working out smoothly. And today was actually a really great day, so I'm looking forward to tomorrow as well. Or I hope it goes just as smoothly. And luckily, the kids seemed really happy to be back. And that was the one thing that made the biggest difference of all for me was to just have that noise in the school again and just to see that action. So I'm really looking forward to that. And very appreciative of the opportunity to be back here in Carson City. Thank you.
Susan, welcome back. I know you started your career team teaching with my wife Nancy.
I know, I did.
And she told me to tell you, welcome back. And welcome back to the district and congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Okay, carrying on. Next in line, we have Dr. Susan Molden. And Dr. Molden is no stranger. She's been with us for a number of years. And she too has done some extraordinary things in her career. Of course, we appreciate her time as a teacher and as an administrator. She's also logged time with the Department of Education and has worked as a lecturer on the collegiate circuit here in some universities and colleges here locally. Susan has most recently worked at Eagle Valley Middle School and is now one of the vice principals at Carson High School. And she's been kind to give me some of her time as I've been walking around the schools and has helped to explain to me some of the operational considerations that are going on there at Carson High. And she brings a lot of experience and certainly a work ethic like no other. And really grateful to have her as part of the work going on over at Carson High. So Dr. Molden, welcome.
Do I have to push a button or anything? Okay, hello. So today was an adventure that was like no other. And the best part about it is that as I was standing at the front door, my stomach had so many butterflies in it as these kids were all coming in. And I'm like, oh my gosh, it's my first day at school all over again, and I'm old. But it was such a treat. Every single one of our kids came in with a mask. We had extras to say, can I give you one? They were prepared, they had their computers. All some of them needed was a map. Or could you just point me in the right direction? It was fabulous. And then to start up at the high school with this gentleman and with Mr. Chambers has just been, and this probably doesn't sound very professional, but just been a kick in the butt. I have enjoyed myself so much. I've learned and I couldn't have asked for a better position at this time. So thank you.
Next, we have Dr. Cody Farmworth. Most recently, the vice principal over at Fritsch Elementary School. And of course, before that, Dr. Farmworth worked at Carson High School and was a science teacher, coached a little baseball, just did a lot of other things that we expect all of our staff to do along the way. But really glad to have him take his new assignment over at Carson High School. Of course, Dr. Molden mentioned that Cody is there now. And we look forward to having him join that team. And looking forward for a lot of good things to come out of that group. And so, Dr. Farmworth, any word you'd like to share with us?
Thank you. It's great to be back. Just wanted to thank Dan Brown for my time at Fritsch and the staff there. It's an amazing school. And that was a great opportunity for me to just learn and gain knowledge. But it's also really nice to be back at Carson High with Mr. Chambers and Dr. Molden and that staff as well. So they're phenomenal. So it's good to be back and it's going to be an exciting year. Thank you.
Thanks, Cody. And rather than make the Green Mile walk, I'll stand over here by Amy. Amy Robinson is also changing jobs. Formerly schoolteacher for 25 years, did I get that right?
Twenty, yes.
Twenty something, twenty something. Of course, has also worked over at Carson Middle as a dean where she, that's tough work if you've never tried that dean's job. But hats off to, it seems like that's a jump off the, jumping off place. But I tell you what, folks, for any other jobs you will do in the future, your dean's work will stick with you for the rest of your days and really help to, I don't know, guide the rest of your steps from here on out. Really glad to have Amy joining the staff over at Eagle Valley Middle School where she's replacing Dr. Molden as the vice principal. So Amy will be working with Dr. Conley and staff over there. And we're just really looking forward to what that team can produce at Eagle Valley Middle School. So Mrs. Robinson?
Thank you. Well, I've had a lot of your kids actually in class. But I'm just really, I was at Carson Middle School for a lot of years. Had a great team there. And I'm really excited to be at Eagle Valley. We had a wonderful first day, hoping tomorrow will be just as good. And I'm just really excited for my new adventure.
So Sue, do you have any advice for Amy to get through this with Mr. Conley?
Wear comfortable shoes.
Yeah.
I just wanted to congratulate everybody on, you know, these assignments. This is, you know, I know all of you in different capacities and I think highly of everybody. And I think, you know, we're very well served by having each of you. So thank you very much for what you're doing. Like you all said, it's really, you know, making a good impression and having that first start with the kids. And it sounds like we're off to a good start. We know there's going to, it's going to kind of ebb and flow as we go. But we really appreciate everything that you've all done and that you're doing. So thank you.
Mr. President, members of the board, one of our staff members was unable to be here tonight. That's Mr. Stephen Nelms. And he'll be joining Mrs. DeRoziers at Carson Middle School as a dean. He too has been with us for several years as a teacher. And has been, most recently, varsity track coach at Carson High School. And so we look forward to getting to know him a little better as well. And want to just add some thanks to our principals that are here tonight in support of staff members. Appreciate their work as well. So trustee Wilkie?
I just think it's great that this district has worked so hard to help bring people through the ranks and give opportunities that we get to have homegrown, so you know what you're dealing with. But at the same time, we have opportunities for other people to come in, which I just think says a lot about our administration and our superintendent to have these things in place, that you guys can get that experience that you want to get, even though you guys were great teachers in the classroom. And I always hate that part, but I understand it. There's even better administrators, so it works out. But I just think it says a lot about our district that we have these programs and you people and people are taking advantage of them. And we're getting some of the best of the crop and they're staying in our district. So I thank you for staying and working and the administration for putting these things in place that allows our employees to go farther if they want to.
Okay, well, thanks, folks, for being here. We'll let you enjoy the rest of your evening, unless you want to stay. Folks, before you leave, if you could just get with Dan, we're going to do a little press release. And we'd like to have a photograph with everybody. Whatever you want to do. President Walker, members of the board, I did want to give you a brief update on our staffing. As you know, school started today. And I usually try to give you some kind of an update as to how we're looking in terms of vacancies for certified positions. Really happy to report that we really only have three vacancies at this time. One is a pre-kindergarten teacher at Empire. Then we are looking for a sixth grade math teacher at Carson Middle and a seventh grade health teacher at Carson Middle School. So we feel fortunate in that we are in a good place. But obviously, if there's anybody out there that might be listening or if you're licensed and don't have a job and would like to work in one of these positions, please contact our human resources department. We'd love to have that chat. As was mentioned earlier, today was the first day to have students on campus. And I think one of the things that was very noticeable was just the fewer numbers of students. When you think about the fact that we have a fair number of our students that are on remote learning. And then when you take the remainder of those students and half them again, the numbers were just significantly smaller in all of our buildings. But I think there were a number of positives that I heard and saw today. And of course, we're looking forward to having our cohort number two's first day tomorrow. And we hope that that goes smoothly as well. I want to give kind of a special shout out to our IT folks. There have been some horrendous challenges. And they are working through all of those things with grace and with patience. And I just want to say thanks to them because they have really had to work hard. But we appreciate all that they do for us. And with that, I will turn the time back to Mr. President and end my report there.
Thank you. And I'll just concur about IT. I think that since March, I don't know what we would do without them. For, felt like forever, it was just us and IT in this room during these board meetings. So it's happy to, I'm happy to see some other faces and hear some voices in this room. It's not quite as eerie. So, thank you. So the next item on the agenda is board reports. This is for information only. And we'll start with trustee Creeny.
From Dr. Conley at Eagle Valley Middle School. He thought the first day was arousing success. And it was really fantastic to see the kids today. A little announcement here. We will be having a parent training for all remote learning only. Not the hybrid students, just remote learning only. This Thursday, August 27th, at 3:00 PM in the main gym at Eagle Valley. The purpose is to clarify some common questions and procedures and make sure that all remote learning kids are engaged and ready to go. We just ask that face coverings are worn and parents socially distance when in the gym. Also, we request that only one parent and a student at most attend to maintain social distancing requirements. That's all I have.
Thank you. Trustee Wilkie?
I have a report from Pioneer. Mr. Zona wanted to let everybody know, if you haven't seen it on the Facebook, that they have a new recording studio and it looks pretty cool. And that their first day of school went really well. They don't have a rep yet, so that's why I'm talking. And I have an appointment on Thursday to go see all the other new stuff that they have. So we'll have a better report next meeting.
Thank you. Trustee Varner?
Yes, from Boardroom Bray, Lisa Hutchinson. They said they're off to a great start. They had several new students that registered yesterday. And they continue to have some still coming in. As of yesterday, they had 156 students in remote learning and 395 students in the hybrid model. And today, it went fairly well. I don't think there's many glitches. The kids all seem to follow the rules pretty good, from what I understand. And then from Carson Middle School, Mr. Sadler, Dan Sadler. He said, we had a great day at Carson Middle School today. Students were all in class on time with our new five-minute passing and did a great job wearing their face masks, keeping their hands sanitized, and maintaining social distancing. They were successful in following all the rules, kids were. And they were glad to see their smiling faces back into the classroom, even though they couldn't see their smiles because of the masks. But they were glad to see them back in the classroom. And they were working through some problems with edginess. You know, I think everybody knows that, they have a few problems. And everything went fairly well. They're looking forward to having the second cohort back tomorrow. And they're hoping that everything goes as successful tomorrow as it did today. That'll be in my report.
Thank you. Trustee Cassioppo?
Thanks. No official report. I haven't bugged Mr. Chambers yet. Thought I'd let him get through the first day. But I did get a chance to catch up with some parents I know who have kids at the high school in various levels. Even the ones that are a little apprehensive about coming back. Were happy to see the first day of school upon us. It's an exciting time for everybody. You know, maybe a little more exciting at times than we want it to be right now. But it's exciting nonetheless, and it's been good feedback from everybody. I've received some emails from people inquiring about, and it's not on the agenda tonight, but if you have the information, great. Just about, we still have, everybody seems to know we have people still switching a little bit. You know, that, I think Mr. Stokes mentioned kind of buyer's remorse. And so our remote learning's going up a little bit. And so some of the people who are taking remote learning are finding out that those classes are starting to fill up. And they were curious, you know, once they get so full, what's, you know, what's the plan? Will they open up other classes and things like that? But that was a, you know, I got that from a few people, not a whole lot. But, you know, the question's out there. People are still learning every day and they were kind of curious what we're looking at. And I felt like I would just pass that along to you.
Mr. Cassioppo, if I may, we have talked about a desire to let the current system work for approximately two weeks. And we'd make some modifications as needed. But we have to get to that point where we can understand really who is actually on the roll, who's in class. And as some of these changes are happening, it's making it really difficult for the building administrators and the teachers to really get established. And so we're hoping we can settle in and see how our system works. And then we can possibly make some adjustments.
Thank you. That makes sense.
Trustee Ramirez, so with all the walls in the way, if you are wanting to contribute, you might have to wave your hand, so I noticed you down there.
So I don't have an official report either, but I am looking forward to going in meeting with the principals to hear about the experience they're having. I'm sure they're overwhelmed. I'm sure there's a lot going on, you know, on their first day, but yeah, so.
Thank you. Trustee Crossman?
Okay, so Dr. Ward from Fremont wanted to report that today was an awesome day and everything went smooth and wonderful. And she is looking very forward to tomorrow and seeing the other kids. And Mr. Brown at Fritsch wanted to thank all of the parents for such an awesome start to this school year. He said that the parents have supported by talking to their children about wearing masks, social distancing, and washing hands. And today was a great day at Fritsch. And they are looking forward to seeing their Wednesday, Friday kids tomorrow. And also, the remote learners are doing a great job as well. So he wants to thank them for communicating with their teachers and organizing their day to make remote learning successful. So both things, both elementary schools are having a great start. I have four children this year in the district, two at the high school, one at the middle, and one in elementary. And they start tomorrow. And I just want, like, to let you know that they're really excited. And two days of remote was a little hard for them to have to wait because they wanted to get back into the classroom. And also, because I am a parent with that many kids, I do have 22 teachers for my kids. So remember when your kids are in different, when families have multiple kids, that sometimes the parents get a little overwhelmed too because it's a lot to keep track of what this school wants and what this teacher wants. And so we're all going to be patient with each other and all do the very best that we can. Also, I wanted to report for NASB for you fellow board members. Tomorrow, we're having a legislative committee meeting. And one of the things we're going to discuss is looking forward to the new session that will start in February next year. There's already been talk of bringing forth bills to appoint school board members in the districts in Nevada. And so NASB is looking to take a position on that and to provide some input and guidance. So anything that you would like to brainstorm for ideas to me that I could share? I know school board members are the only elected officials who are required by state law to receive training. And we do. But there's still some poor boardsmanship occurring on different boards within the state. So if you could give me that information by tomorrow afternoon, just send me an email, I'd appreciate it. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Mrs. Zona reports that they had an amazingly smooth start to the school year. It was great to see children again. And their open house was a virtual success. And she wants us all to know that she's hoping tonight goes well for us as the board. So, good job, Pirates. And then somebody- good job, Pirates. And then somebody had shared a document that Mrs. Morris and Ms. Pryor worked on for the professional development days for staff, and I've had some feedback from teachers who really appreciated that tool. I was really impressed when I saw that tool, so kudos to both of you. I think that you're a real treasure.
For the school district.
So other than that, I'll just say, welcome back to all of the teachers and administrators, and certainly the students. It's going to be an adventurous school year, but I think it's time to get back to work, and I think that there's a lot of us that are ready to see what happens. What's that? Go ahead.
I forgot to mention that Mr. Sadler wanted the students to know that they need to use their full student email to log in.
Trustee Varner, could you pull the mic a little closer?
Student ID number, and they need to use their full student.
Richard.
Go ahead.
Will you, Richard?
Did you get a little closer?
You need to get closer. They can't hear you. Thanks.
It's a stupid mask.
[laughter]
I shouldn't have said that.
[laughter]
Yeah. That was beeped out, right? All right. What Mr. Sadler wanted everybody to know, to remind all the students, that they have to use their full student email to log into edgenuity, and I guess some have just been using their student ID number, and so they haven't been successful in getting on, so just remember to use your full email. And also, one group I would like to thank is I was by Boardrick Bray this morning, about 7:15, 7:20, and I wanted to thank the Carson City Sheriff's Office because they had three motorcycle officers in the area right on King Street there slowing down traffic. So I thought that was a great thing, and I just wanted to publicly thank them for having those officers there.
No problem. All right. Next on the agenda is association reports. Mr. Wallace, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. President. My name is Brian Wallace with the Orange County Education Association. Mr. Stokes, trustees, staff, we would also like to echo the thanks to Ms. Morris and Carrie Pryor for everything that they've done. That document was awesome. It was just so nice, smooth, responsive, all the time and effort they put into it, because due to licensing requirement changes for renewals at the state level, it helped all of us meet our 15-hour requirements right up front, and then it was all tied to directly everything we would need. The real positive with it, too, just from my own personal point of being in the classroom, was formative assessments are kind of interesting to figure out this year, because I relied on whiteboards and markers a lot. And so having someone doing all the legwork for me and IT helping them with looking through what really, really interfaces, especially with Google, was extremely valuable, because now I have new tools to be able to do that, tools I can send home with the kids, and to be able to work the, all of this to make sure it's going to function. And once again, we need to brag about ourselves. I'm not hearing that from other places, unfortunately, that when they were granted the five days through NDE, they were not maybe put to as good a use as we actually did within this district. And so the association is very grateful for that, to have that dedicated staff, the time and the effort, because it wasn't easy, you know, as with everything. There were technology glitches, and both of them were right on top of it, and it didn't matter how late it was, how early it was. It was there. The recordings were up in a timely manner, so those of us tasked with other items within our sites were able to do that asynchronous, which was amazing, because then we can just take care of it during our own time. So that PD, those last five days, was extremely valuable. And the association does really appreciate all the work we've done together, especially on the IT side, knowing all the investments we've put in place has put us, for us as teachers, so far ahead of other districts, and we just, yeah, we have our bumps in the road, and we're always going to have, but it is just amazing seeing it constantly work out. And our new parent communication system through Parent Square, I know you'll hear about this evening, but IT's been extremely responsive to that. I know they've been flooded with suggestions. The association was flooded with suggestions. I'm one of the tech guys at Eagle Valley. I was flooded with suggestions, and it all filtered through, and I mean, literally, within 24 to 48 hours, we were able to start to see changes come down. So the amount of work everyone has put in as a team to ensure we reached this point today and get to see everyone walk in the door was pretty cool. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Do we have any association reports online?
Seen none.
Renee will read one. So seen none. We'll move on. Thank you, Renee. I should have given you a little warning. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Comments will be accepted through telephonic participation or through virtual participation via email at publiccomment@carson.k12.nv.us. Comments may be made by members of the public on any matter within the authority of this board. Please note that public comment will be taken on items marked for possible action before action is taken on such items. And members of the public are encouraged to comment on such items at the time they are being considered. Although members of the board may respond to questions and discuss issues raised during public comment, no action may be taken on such a matter until the matter is placed on an agenda for action at a meeting of the board. In making public comments, speakers are asked to identify themselves for the record. Speakers are further asked to refrain from speaking over each other if participating by telephone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to no more than three minutes, whether in writing or oral, and not simply repeat comments made by others. This is for discussion only. I guess we'll start in the room. Do we have any public comment? Seen none. Any on the telephone, Raymond?
Seen no public comments online.
All right, and I know we have a public comment.
This public comment is from Soria Wach. She's writing, "As a parent and as a friend and family member of educators here and in other districts, there are a lot of unknown as we move towards reopening schools during the pandemic. There's still a lot to learn about the coronavirus and how it will affect our children and the adults working as our educators. What will we do, excuse me, what we do is that science backs the wearing of masks. Mask Directive. We have all witnessed those who think that this is a hoax or don't understand the seriousness of COVID-19. We've seen this unfold across the nation and here in our small community where many people are still refusing to wear masks. Unfortunately, what is really a public health crisis has become political. My concern is the reality that we are going to see this same behavior in our schools. You still have students whose parents have told them for the past six months that this is not real, that this will magically end in November. Even more frightening and dangerous is that you have staff that believe the same thing. So my question for the board, for the Carson City School District, is how are you going to enforce the face covering mandate in our schools? You will no doubt have administrators and teachers that will be lackadaisical, or worse, forget about wearing masks. We don't have, if we don't have leadership, we are not going to have compliance. Let me say that again. If we don't have leadership, we are not going to have compliance. And in the case of COVID-19, that outcome can be deadly. How will we as parents know that your staff is doing the right thing and wearing their mask coverings consistently throughout the school day? Will staff be able to return to work knowing that their colleagues will be expected to wear their face coverings and that the directives of the governor, as well as the school district, will be enforced? How are we going to ensure that students and staff alike are protecting one another? Protection of staff. In looking at the FAQ on the district webpage, it's unclear what health conditions the school district is taking seriously and making accommodations for in regards to COVID-19, and on what basis this decision is being made. Are you making accommodations based on the individual health conditions of your staff, or are you making them based on your needs as a district? Because this is a novel virus, we don't yet know how it will affect people with different health conditions. The CDC has a very clear list of conditions stating that people with these conditions are or might be at an increased risk of severe illness from COVID-19. The list includes people who have cancer, chronic kidney disease, moderate to severe asthma, and pregnancy. A link was provided within this comment. From whom is the CDC, excuse me, the district receiving guidance on this?
Renee, that's three minutes, so we'll include the remainder in the minutes. And just for the record, that public comment was omitted from our last board meeting, and we were aware of that after the meeting, and so we have included those comments in both, the record for both meetings. So we apologize for that. Any other public comment? All right, thank you. Item number seven, informational update from the Carson City Schools Foundation. This is for discussion only, and we welcome some familiar faces. We have Steve Reynolds, Casey Gillis, and Keith Squires. Good evening, everyone.
Thank you. Steve Reynolds, president of Carson City Schools Foundation Board. With me, I have Casey Gillis and Keith Squires, both members of the board, longtime educators, administrators, and very dedicated people to the students in our, in our district. So welcome, and thank you for joining us. We've got a little quick PowerPoint here. We'll go through some details and answer any questions you might, that you might have. So 2019, 2020, some of our activities and our current position. Go ahead, Renee. What do I do?
Ringer.
Just push plus?
This one.
Oh, that one. Okay.
Oh.
Oh, no. Oh, no.
There we go.
There we kind of go.
There it is.
Okay. We're going to cover our current financial position, talk a little bit about the foundation, and then some of the grants and financial aid awards that we have done and have planned.
Which one? There you go.
Got you.
Okay, first off, where does our funding come from? Individual donors and school district employee payroll deductions. We are very pleased and proud of the payroll, the payroll deductions that are, their staff in the district has decided to contribute. We get well over $700 every month from that, just small donations. I think the last time I looked, we had almost 10% of the staff was donating some monies to the foundation on a monthly basis, and that's great. Our goal is not necessarily to collect a lot of money from, from the staff. This is, that's not the goal. The goal behind the employee campaign is to make sure that our staff is quite aware that the foundation exists and what we do, and if they choose to support us, that's great. All funds are dedicated to accomplishing the goals of the foundation, and anyone who wishes can make a contribution to the foundation, knowing that the expenditure of the funds is watched over, and we're very careful that we're using it for a good purpose. You'll see that later. I'll just use this. This is our financial position as of the 13th. We have a gross balance of, shown on the board, of over $91,000. $91,000. We're holding a certain amount of that money for a committed scholarship fund, and we have $89,000 plus available to be used for foundation projects. Our goal, our, our mission basically is that we want to secure funding for the schools, for the students. We want to support projects with that money that go beyond the scope of things that are funded by the school district budget, and work with the larger community to promote gifting, to promote the district, promote participation in our schools. Our board meets monthly. We review and approve financials. We accept funds for the support of the Carson City Public Schools, determine financial goals, and it was something that's very enjoyable. We spend a lot of time designing funding methods, developing parameters, and basically just deciding some great ways to disperse the money for good projects. There's our current board members. We appreciate their work. They, everyone's a volunteer. And, you know, many of them put in a lot of hours. It just scares me how many hours that, for instance, Casey puts in on this. Just amazing, so. Our current grant program, we had approved this last spring, a grant budget of $20,000 for the upcoming school year. This outlines it fairly well. Something that was new for this year was $2,000 for individual student grants. We'd been told for a while that there were individual fees, that there were just some households that could not afford, and so we're preventing participation by, by some students. So we developed that. A popular program for many years, have been our mini grants to educators and others in the district who had come up with a project that, with a little bit of funding, can be, can do, provide some real rewards for our students. This year, we plan for $2,200 grants to be awarded this fall. My understanding is that that went out, the, the announcement about that went out, went out today or yesterday, so we'll be looking forward to those applications. Something else that's somewhat new is that we have allocated $10,000 for group grants. This is something where a team, a school, a department might find something much more expensive than $200 that's worth, that's worth building something that's sustainable and perhaps a benefit over more than one school. And then every year, we have special requests. We budgeted $2,000 for that. Casey, is there anything about that that I overlooked that you wanted to emphasize?
Just so you know, the grants that we give reach every level in our district. We have high schools, both middle schools, all the elementaries. We have had classified staff, bus drivers, receive grants, and then last year, with the group grants, we had, like, grade level and district-wide grants that we gave. One teacher put in for a teacher grant, and we realized she, she needed it for the entire grade level at Carson Middle, so we moved her over into the group grant so she could really do what she needed to do. So it's across the board. We take our applications from everyone, and like I say, we have classified people, you know, teachers, other staff, and administrators putting in, so it's, it's across the board. I've got the list if anybody wants to see it. I don't think you need to.
Go ahead. Let me push the next forward button.
Okay.
That slide talks about the mini grants that we do. Like I said, been very popular with all of the staff members and, and other departments within the district, which is really awesome to see how they can use these special funds. Oh, it's working now. Oh, okay, got it. Okay, actually, I want to talk about a new grant that wasn't up there, called the Kathy Bober Grant for the district. It's for, specifically for brand-new teachers. But there's two $250 grants to help them get their classes up and running. They have to apply for it, just like the other mini-grants, but like I said, specifically for brand-new teachers. And Kathy Bover is, who this is named after, is a great supporter and had been a great supporter of the district for a long time, and she has since passed away, so we named it after her.
Last year, we awarded our mini-grants in two different stages. We did some in the fall, and we did some in the spring. This year, we're doing them all in the fall. But these are some of our spring mini-grants that we awarded. As you can see, they cross a lot of different applications. I think we, we've reached out through the years. I think we've had every school, we've hit student support services, and we even awarded a grant to, for books in a, in our school buses, right?
Right.
Yeah. It was an interesting, excellent application we received that students could use a little bit, a better constructive entertainment in the bus, so, kind of a traveling library, so to speak. Some more of that. These are the department grants that we've awarded. I think that explains it well. I was a little, when I first heard about Mark Kornick's asking for recycling bins, I was, I wondered about that, and I've been told that they've received a lot of use, and it made a big difference that he was able to buy even more than he was budgeted for. So we get a lot of different applications, and, boy, I tell you, the results that's come from the one are just great. Most of them are doing things that are sustainable for more than just the, the year they were applied for. Years ago, when I was heavily involved with the chamber, what surprised me was how many people that were involved in business organizations in the community who wanted to help students, wanted to help the district, but didn't have a connection to do that. A lot of them volunteer, a lot of them are willing to give money, and I guess our message is that if you wish to support the school district, if you wish to support our students financially, the foundation is here. We're happy to help you, and we will watch over your, your contribution and spend it in the right place for our students. So if anyone has any questions, I'd like to answer them at this time.
Steve, thanks for everything you guys are doing at the foundation. For teachers who are interested in applying, I know they can go on the website, the foundation's website and apply, and it's a very simple process. Now, you had mentioned that you're accepting applications in the fall now, not the spring, but do they have to use that money within a certain amount of time, or if they have a project that's better suited for the spring, they can use it then? Are there any limitations there?
Is that it? Okay. It really makes no difference if they don't want to use it till spring. The money is available for them, but what we decided was, by the time they get the money in the spring, even though we tried to get it out to the schools by the end of January, sometimes it was, by the time they got the supplies, it was like, well, I'll, I'll start this next year. So we thought, rather than make them wait and not have this, let's just give them all out in the fall, and then they get more use. So that was our reasoning. And this year, we waited a little bit later than normal, just because we thought things are in such an uproar, kind of, and we thought people may not yet know what they need, and we want to make sure that we're available to help the district in this time of uncertainties, to help the staff and the students in ways we may not even know yet. But that's our dedication this year is to, like everybody else, do what we have to do. So that was, did that answer it for you, Joe?
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Casey.
Thank you.
Well, and I'll just say, thank you for helping all of our schools and our teachers and students, so we appreciate your support. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is informational update on teacher training provided to certified staff for the 2020, 2021 school year. This is for discussion only, and we'll call Tasha Fuson, Carrie Pryor, and LeAnn Morris. Good evening, ladies.
Thank you, President Walker. As you've all heard very nicely and very rightly so this evening about our professional learning method, these two amazing professionals put together behind me for our teachers. We wanted to be able to actually demonstrate that for you so you could see what that looks like and what the expectation for our staff was. I will tell you that goal going forth was truly to make sure that we were preparing our teachers for either full-time remote or the hybrid learning model with blended learning utilizing our technology and the tech resources that we've purchased to facilitate our new models of instruction. So tasked with that feat, these two, like I said, amazing professionals next to me actually came up with this, this professional learning notebook that they're going to walk you through to really model for our teachers what we're expecting for them to be doing for their students as we go through the years. So I'm going to turn the time over to these amazing women to share this with you. Thank you. So Carrie Pryor for the Record Professional Learning Coordinator for Carson City School District. When Tasha and I first talked in the middle of July about what the plan would be, something instantly came to my mind. I hate the word overwhelmed. I think people overused it, and now I want to tell everybody who kept saying they were overwhelmed before, don't you just want to go back to being whelmed? And so honestly, in 26 years, I've always disliked that word, and this actually was the first time where I started to feel like, oh, my gosh, I'm going to be so overwhelmed. And Tasha said to me, Carrie, I'm going to ask you to do what the teachers are doing. And I thought to myself, well, you should, because I know we've all had so many conversations about what TOSSAs are, and I'm a TOSA. I'm a teacher on special assignment. And so I love that I'm a TOSA. I love that I'm still a teacher. And so as I got into it, I was like, this is what my colleagues are doing, and they have to do it for 180 days. I just had to maintain it for eight. So I was like, okay, I can do this. But I just really want to get back to being whelmed. So as Tasha mentioned, the very first thing after we talked, I was like, well, what's the platform going to be, or how are we going to present this information? So of course, I reached out to LeAnn, Dr. Morris, right away, and I do need to give a big shout out to Tyra Babula, because she's the one that told me about the notebook. So if you're looking for a platform, it's called Slides Mania. I also have to give credit to Slides Mania. It's a template, but we had to modify the template for our needs. For tonight's presentation, you all have the full notebook in its entirety. Ms. Renee sent that to you, and we're just going to share a few modified and then take a few questions. So the very first piece we needed to do is, as, huge shout out, you can tell I've got very professional notes here, but huge shout out to both departments, the IT department and to grants, because we were on a really short timeframe with getting these platforms up and running. And so I need to have a big shout out to both Jessica Greener and Paige Kamara, because they were putting POs out to these companies as fast as they could, and then letting me know on a daily basis when these would be ready. And then Mr. Brian Walts, who's our systems engineer, I think Brian's probably had the most emails out of anyone in the district about these programs, and his turnaround was amazing. So you can see that we had what was called some mandatory trainings and learning to make up the 15 hours, because everyone will be required to use ParentSquare. You've been, you'll hear about that later tonight, but that's our communication tool. And then, of course, we're using Google Classroom as our platform for our learners, and then Zoom, which we all know crashed right on that first day, but nationwide, luckily, it wasn't just in Carson City, Screencastify, and so on and so forth, and you can see that. So our teachers, as Mr. Wallace so kindly mentioned, if you've been following what's happening with recertification with teachers, they're now required to have 15 hours for license renewal per year, once you recertify. And so working with Tasha, we decided that this would be the best way for our teachers to get that right off their plates for the year. And so our teachers actually filled out an accountability form, a Google form, each day, and then I will award them their certificates. So each day was set up very similar, as you can see in the notebook, and I'm sure you had a chance to take a look at it, except for Thursday. Thursday, if you haven't watched the video, but I'm guessing all of you have, y'all have watched the video. It's pretty amazing. I, I do have to give a shout out to Dan. He has just, his work has been great, really positively promoting our district and putting together pretty much anything that I ask him to do, as well as others around the district. So the welcome video, and then, of course, we had the teachers meet in their professional learning communities, because we thought it was important for them to make a plan for the week and kind of look at what's all in the notebook. And then we had, on this afternoon, two mandatory trainings. And what's important to note here is that for each training, we wanted to offer synchronous, meaning, you know, in-person via Zoom, or asynchronous, as Mr. Wallace mentioned, that if you're a learner who can watch a tutorial, which I'm not that way, like I'm going to be asking questions and I have to see your face, we offered both those options. Now Friday changed it up, but for the rest of the professional learning days, it stayed the same. If you were one of the groups listed on the morning, you had a meeting via Zoom, and some did meet in-person, socially distanced, of course. But in the afternoon, this is where choice happened, and we had 47 synchronous choices over the course of the remaining five days, as well as numerous asynchronous options. And then each of the synchronous options were recorded, and as soon as we got the link, the Zoom recording, then teachers could watch that just in case they missed it on the previous And that just continued throughout the week. Oh, sorry, I thought maybe you were saying something. Okay. So just a, just a note about who offered the trainings. You'll see that, for example, this one's highlighted, because LeAnn's going to talk about it next, about the educator dashboard. But we had staff around the district. We had other teachers on special assignment. We had classroom teachers. A huge shout out to Jim Bean. I have never talked to Jim Bean in my life, in 11 years. If y'all know him, he's at the high school. I mean, I'd see his name, but I actually never talked to him. That man did, I want to say, six in-person trainings for us around the district on YouTube, and, and he right away reached out. He's like, Carrie, I'd like to do some training. I'm like, I don't know who you are, Jim, but okay. And he just stepped up to the plate, and it was great. But we had elementary teachers, we had secondary teachers, and then we also worked with the Northwest Regional Professional Development Center, who services the five counties in our area. And then we also had third-party vendors. Raymond was able to work with EdTech, Discovery Ed, HMH, and so we had a whole variety of folks helping us. You can see that each of the sessions, also, the other important thing was that all the materials that they need, the notebook's going to stay open from now until forever. We have no point in, in deleting it. But all the PowerPoints or slides and materials are right there for the teachers, because that was one of the important things. They're like, well, what if we don't remember? We want to go back. So they can go back. The other thing to note, too, is that we took into account truly all, almost 1,000 of our employees. We offered a special morning for our paraprofessionals, and you can see that Dr. Lennox was key in orchestrating that, and she had Kristen Robinson in, talking about students returning with like overexcitabilities and social emotional awareness for our paraprofessionals. And then we also offered for our parapros, a three-hour session with Nate Wade, who works with that Northwest Regional Professional Development Center, on truly the things that our paraprofessionals do, because they tend to be that first point of contact with our students in troubleshooting what's going on with their Chromebooks and Google Classroom. And so he did just a phenomenal job with our paraprofessionals in that afternoon. So I'm going to ask LeAnn. LeAnn, do you want to jump in on anything? No? You're doing okay? All right. Okay. This is how our system worked all, leading up to this, too. LeAnn? No. So anyway, just, I was just going to click through a little bit, and then to show you the offerings. So here would be the asynchronous. We did want to highlight Avid, which Tasha, I know, has spoken to you about before, but open access for Avid. A lot of people on the forums were so grateful, because they had heard a lot about some of these programs, but didn't know where to go, and so they were able to walk themselves through that. Another one, this was really cool, because our teachers wanted to be educator, Google educator certified, Level 1 and/or 2, they were able to do that, and it takes about 12 hours, so that kind of took up most of their time there. And then Screencastify, another shout out to Raymond. He organized with Mimi Loughlin, if you know Mimi, she's one of our STEM coaches. She went and put together the Screencastify tutorials into a really nice series that many teachers took advantage of, become a master screencaster, a genius, and then more resources. So I think it offered just a, a nice variety for our teachers. And, you know, again, I think the goal was to really share with the teachers that, you know, one size doesn't fit all, and this is why I was actually really happy about it, because I included a few feedback. I didn't include some of the nasty grams that I got when things weren't working, but, and I did have one breakdown, I readily admit it, and then as soon as I sent it, I said, oh, my gosh, Mr. Stokes is part of the district distribution list, and the email just said, this is not my fault, when the EdTech wasn't working. But I had gotten like 37 emails in one minute, because they were all waiting to log on, but then I, like I told Tasha afterwards, the nice part was, was that if it was crickets and it wasn't working, I'd be like, what are the teachers doing? But because there were so many, right, they were all trying to learn, so that was exciting.
Well, and when things aren't working, Carrie, it doesn't matter whose fault it is, people just want it to work.
I know. So I was just like, and then I had to send an email saying, oops, sorry, sent that without an emoji, you know, because emojis always make it better, but anyway, I just had one breakdown. But I, I loved this, this quote, or this feedback that I got, because I think that anybody who's ever been a professional learning coordinator has felt this, and it was from one of the teachers that I highly, highly respect. And basically, what she was saying was that you can read it, right, that she was dreading the week, because pessimistically, she thought that she was going to be sitting in webinars, being told how to add an assignment to Google Classroom, and she was relieved to have been wrong. Instead, she was able to choose work and programs that she wasn't as familiar with, and she's learned a lot, and that it was refreshing. And so I know, I can speak for LeAnn, too, and when we read those comments, we were just so like overwhelmed with gratitude that our hard work was really paying off. And then, of course, there's a couple other comments on there that we just wanted to share, that the feedback that we've received overwhelmingly has been positive. Unfortunately, the feedback has also been, are all PD days going to be like this in the future? And I said, no, I have to go back to just being whelmed. So, right, Tasha?
Yeah, you can. I just have to butt in here a little bit, because it was a funny moment to me, that Carrie, I think it was Thursday, after, in the evening, after our teachers had gone through, walking through their notebook, might have been Friday, but she calls me up, and she's like, all right, you know what? Next time, paper, pencil, that's it. I'm just going to do a chart. That's all I want. That's, you know, that kind of thing. And of course, I knew she was kidding, sort of. But I said, you know, Carrie, here's the phenomenal thing about this, is that our teachers are on the other end, being learners, and they're getting exposed to the new way that our students are going to have to learn. So they're going to be able to really relate to their kids as a learner, as well as them as an educator, and I know that they're going to turn the corner, and it's going to be okay. And I don't think it was, but maybe two, a day or two later, then Carrie called me and said, all right, you know what? They're right, they've got this, everybody's working, things are going, you know, all the... phenomenal thing about this, is that our teachers are on the other end, being learners, and they're getting exposed to the new way that our students are going to have to learn. So they're going to be able to really relate to their kids, as a learner, as well as an educator. And I know that they're going to turn the corner, and it's going to be okay. And I don't think it was, but maybe, two, a day or two later, then Carrie called me and said, all right, you know what, they're right. They've got this. Everybody's working, things are going, you know, all the kinks are getting worked out. This is phenomenal, and now, everybody wants it to be this way every day, every time, every other time we do professional learning. So I think that's just a real testament to how amazing that this turned out for our staff. The other thing I want you to know is that you may be thinking, in your head, 15 hours, five professional learning days, really equates more to 35 hours of teacher time. What's 15 hours of professional learning? Well, when we were planning this as a team, one of the things that we felt was very important is that our teachers would not only have time to be a firsthand learner, right, to be able to learn new information, but then have time to integrate that information that they're learning into their practices. So it was literally set up this way, so that teachers had half their day each day, right, those morning times, to take what they were learning and try to put it into practice, and also to have on-demand learning. So again, when you look at those asynchronous pages, because I said the type of learner I am, I could sit there and maybe watch Screencastify, and I can watch this great little video, and then, when I go to do it two days later, I'm like, uh, I don't remember. So then, they could pull it up and watch it while they were making their own videos, and they could go back and forth and have it on-demand. So that's exactly what LeAnn and Carrie did for our teachers, to make sure that it was, again, kept up every step of the way, so that those video links were put on there immediately, or within less than 24 hours, actually, of those courses being completed, and that, again, our teachers could go back and revisit, and revisit, and revisit, so they can integrate the skills that they've learned. So, that was just, I think, really positive, in terms of us being able to hopefully be more responsive to our teachers as learners themselves. So, that was definitely a highlight. And then, moving forward, LeAnn, I've asked her to demonstrate for you the teacher dashboard, because, again, we want to be able to focus all of the resources that we've purchased for you. So we want to make sure they're no good unless our teachers actually use them and apply them within the classroom. So, LeAnn is going to show you the teacher dashboard, and where some of these resources live, and what that looks like for our staff.
Can we, I just want to get to the district website.
So I'm going to keep talking while LeAnn, she's navigating to our teacher website, to the district website. So we actually have a teacher dashboard and a student dashboard. So our next topic will show the student dashboard. But for all of our teachers, they just go up to the CCSD bookmarks file on the top of their bar, and then, it should take them to the teacher dashboard. Some more tech challenges. So, as they've stated, too, I'm kind of laughing as we go through this, as you heard, that our Zoom yesterday did go down, and we also had telephone issues and slow email systems. But, you know what, I was so impressed with our staff, and I was so impressed with our students, because just that perseverance, and the fact that people are being so graceful to one another, to just realize that, you know, as we shift into this new, this new learning format, not just in our district, but all across the country, because Zoom, as they stated, was a national thing, it is amazing that people are full of grace, and this has been able to, you've been able to work through those issues. So, and here we go, demonstrating that, the reason for a very strong IT department. All right, there you go. That looks great. Here's Lan.
Good evening. LeAnn Morris, for the record. It's always exciting to come and talk to all of you, and thank you, Mrs. Fuson and Mr. Stokes, for the opportunity to share a little bit about what I did as Carrie's right-hand man, but really, she was the one that did the majority of the work. So kudos to Carrie on this. One of the sessions that I conducted was navigating school district resources. And so, we are very happy that we have an educator dashboard that has teacher resources, and then, the next agenda item I'll be talking about are student resources. So our teachers, this is their homepage that they have on their laptops, and so, all of their resources are here. There is this technology Q&amp;A section that has a lot of information for our teachers to go to. Our virtual platform for the district is Zoom. There are some great resources here that you can see, and they can just log right into their district Zoom account and be able to conduct those virtual meetings. Then you can see that all of the icons, I shouldn't say all of the icons, a majority of the icons that our teachers use on a daily basis are also here. And so, it gives them, I'm going to bring this down, sorry, I'm having a difficult time talking, that the icons that they use, as I said, on a daily basis, it's very easy for them to navigate. All of our teachers are set up in their Google Classrooms now, and so, I am very happy that we have that consistent platform. This is Crossman. That will be helpful for your students and all of your teachers, you know, that you will be working with. We are very fortunate in Carson City School District. Not only do we have full access to the Google Suite, but we also have full access to Office 365. So our students and our staff have the best of both worlds in both of those areas. The teachers can get back to the district website very easily here as well. This is a great section for our resources. The teachers can help the students reset their passwords if they're having trouble getting into their Chromebook. The students can also reset their own passwords, so they have access to that. And then, one thing that I would like to highlight here is this approved digital resource list. It is very important, probably more important than ever, but it's always been very important in Carson City School District, that we have resources that are approved for student data privacy. And so, this list that is constantly being updated, as you can see, we have 181 different resources now that are approved for our teachers to use. Granted, we cannot support all of them from a technical or an instructional, you know, aspect, but they are approved as far as complying with all of the state and federal data privacy laws. So that is a really great resource. If a teacher comes across a new digital tool that they are interested in using, there is a, they can actually go in and request that the tool be, you know, approved, or it actually goes through a whole series of compliance, that they look at the privacy, the terms of agreement, and the privacy laws, and make sure that it does approve. If it doesn't, we can, we're working with a vendor called Education Framework, that will help contact the vendor, and then, we can still see if it's approved. And it's really helped our teachers understand that we don't just say, no, you can't use a tool. This is why. It doesn't comply with, you know, one or two or more of these data privacy requirements. A big shout out to Raymond, to putting this professional learning resource link here. All of our videos and recordings are available here for each one of these. So this is a quick place for our teachers to go back. Of course, they can always go back to the digital notebook, but they are able to go here and find all of the recordings from all of our sessions from the past two weeks. So that is a great resource for the teachers. We'll navigate back to this. And then, a few of the other resources, there were sessions on all of these digital pillars, the Tier 1 digital resources. So each one of these links takes the teachers to an external resource that will help them, whether it's a tutorial or something that's actually from the vendor itself. And so, that is a great resource. Carrie had mentioned NWRPDP. We have a link to their website, as well as to the Nevada Department of Ed. Once again, kind of a one-stop shop to help our teachers navigate where they need to go. In addition to, I mentioned that our educator dashboard is on our teacher laptops. The student dashboard is on our student Chromebooks. But in addition to that, we have four schools that have awesome school websites. And so, in addition to the student dashboard loading, the school website also loads in a second tab. So you can see, a shout out to Carson High School, Carson Middle School, Eagle Valley Middle School, and Fremont, the Fremont Falcon News. And always being concerned, as we have been for a long time in Carson City, with all of our digital resources and technology, the digital citizenship curriculum, as well as our technology acceptable and responsible use policy. So it's very easy for our teachers to find those, as well as the student Chromebook handbook that all of our students and parents sign and look at. Safe Voice being another resource that's very important to our teachers and our students. So that's kind of a bird's-eye view of the educator dashboard for our teachers and all of our staff members. Do you have any questions about anything that I've just talked about or showed?
I just had a question from earlier. Did, number one, thank you, guys, for all the work you put into this, everybody, all the staff. We truly appreciate it. It looks like it was a great training. But my question was, did all the certified staff, were they able to get their 15 hours of training?
That's a really great question, Mr. Varner. We have 3,600 submissions, the form, and so, we're right now separating those out by site to give to the principals for accountability. And then, I will issue to each of the staff members the 15 hours. But if folks felt like they weren't able to complete the 15 hours, we worked on individual case-by-case basis. We did do some extensions. Our counselors, who have been working tirelessly to make sure that the students are in the right cohorts, things like that, we did extend their deadline. But for the majority, when I checked on Thursday, when I checked on Thursday, which was the deadline, we had 298 out of our certified staff that had completed their 15 hours, and we have just under 500 certified staff right now. So, well over half.
Thank you.
Not a question. I just wanted to thank you. I spoke to a few teachers, my wife being one of them, and, you know, her explanation in the last two weeks was like, you know, like you said, it was overwhelming, but in a good way. I mean, she was really appreciative about, you know, how these two weeks went, and the amount of information that was presented. And the few others I spoke to said the same thing, and it was, as far as I know, very much appreciated, a lot of good information. And, I mean, my hat's off to everybody for making it go as smooth as it did, because, as you know, I'm afraid to ask what else this year. The fact that that went as smooth as it did, kudos to everybody. So, thank you.
Well, and I just had a thought, when you were talking about supporting our teachers as learners, which certainly is true. I think that these tools are the wave of the future. And unfortunately for all of us, we've really been dumped right in the middle of it. There's no gradual increase. But I think that one of the nice things is, this is also modeling for our teachers, because what we hear from a lot of parents is the frustration with how the tools are working, and making sure that those assignments are meaningful. And I think what you put together is something that's very meaningful. And I'm hoping our teachers start to see ways they could do that for their students. I just think it's very time-consuming, and I don't know necessarily that anybody has the time to do that for all of their lessons this year. But I think it's modeling, and it kind of sets the bar for where we want to go as we move forward. And so, thank you for starting that and supporting teachers in that way also.
Thank you, President Walker. I'd like to say, to just conceptualize for our teachers' sake, that there's literally three different types of things they're learning, too. So when you talk about this professional learning opportunity, they're having to learn what a blended learning model looks like, what a flipped classroom model looks like. So just the basics of how you deliver instruction in an online environment. So that's one. Then they have to learn the tools that we've purchased them to allow them to do that, like Screencastify, which allows the teacher to do like a voiceover of a PowerPoint and record that so students can watch it at home. And tools like Kami, which allows a teacher to change an electronic document into a fillable PDF, and a student to be able to annotate or highlight. So there's tools that they have to learn to use, in addition to the philosophy behind it. And then, they also have to learn about the digital educational resources that they can use with their kids. So our online curriculum, the resources that we have in the classroom, as well as supplemental resources like Discovery Education. So when our families are listening to, hopefully, our board meeting at home, or as you're talking to our families, and helping us communicate the scope, the literal scope of what our educators have to do in order to try to provide a quality online hybrid and/or full-time remote education is pretty vast. So it's, I think they're up to the challenge, but it is not a simple switch to flip.
I think that's true. And I think that work is going to be harder for parents this year. It's certainly going to be harder for teachers and administrators. And so, as a community, we just have to work together and support these kids in getting a real high-quality education.
And, I'm going to add a question, just to comment. This is amazing, this document. I was going through it. It's just incredible, the detail and the stuff that's in it. And having you say that it's going to be up all year, I just think is amazing. And to take one thing off their plate, so that they have their 15 hours right off the top, so it's one less thing that they have to worry about when school starts, I think was an incredible idea. I love that we've done the family engagement through credit, through Carrie and her program, and to just develop it more and have this 15 hours. I just think, for everything that they're all going for, that was an amazing thing for you guys to think of, and thinking of that, and having it off their plate, and they don't have to worry about it now till next year. So, I do really appreciate all the hard work and all of the IT that went into it, because it's pretty incredible. It just, it puts us at the top. I mean, why would you want to work anywhere else? And I appreciate that. It makes me very proud.
Thank you for saying that, Stacy. I was just going to comment, when I talked to trustee Crossman out in the, my last note from my fancy notes. But I do want to say, we are going to develop a parent series. My first meeting is on Thursday, and we are going to be working in conjunction with Churchill County. They have had overwhelmingly a request for Parents Series 2, similar to what we've put out for the teachers, but on the backside, right, what do parents need to know about these platforms? And so, Nate Wade from NWRPDP, myself, and I feel really bad, I can't remember the gal's name, who does my job out in Churchill, but out in Churchill, we're going to start a parent series. So please be watching for that. I'm excited to hear that you're having that. But that'll be coming out, so that parents also can navigate these tools.
I think that is really, really important, because Monday morning, we got assignments in Google Classroom, which I learned what the Google Stream is, and that's different than the Google Assignments. It took me a while, and I've used the computer, and I've done things, but there was an assignment in there that we couldn't read. It was too small. And we had to hunt and pick and try to figure out how to make it bigger with the magnifying glass, and then, how to get off the magnifying glass, so that we could write into it. And my head exploded a few times on Monday, and it just, I think the parents are going to need this. I think there's parents that are working full-time from home, or not even at home with their kids, and the kids need, the kids will know how to do it before their parents will, but if parents need to. And I guess that's my other question with, and maybe that's in the next section, on the student dashboard in Google Classroom, because I have access to my elementary kids' Google Classroom when I do it. I don't know how I'm going to access all of the Google Classrooms for my secondary kids. And I don't know if there's any place where I can find those in one location, or something, because by the time it shows up in Infinite Campus, things are late that I don't know about. So that's a tricky situation for parents. And, anyway, I really think parents are going to need training in this, too.
Trustee Crossman, I will address that Google Classroom in just a minute with the student dashboard. Thank you. Thank you.
And I think, I think LeAnn was saying something about, she purposely said it so when you started that lesson, it was going to shrink it down just to stress you out because they were laughing about it. I told them that was mean. So thank you so much for all your work with that. So our next item on the agenda is informational presentation to introduce and demonstrate the student dashboard organizational page found on all student Chromebooks in Carson City School District. This is for discussion only. Dr. LeAnn Morris.
Mr. President, if I could before Mrs. Pryor leaves, I just wanted to give my personal thanks to these ladies all at this table, including Mrs. Fusson, she's not taking any credit here, but this was a tremendous effort. And as I've made my way around the district in the last couple of days, truly, ladies, the thanks from our teachers has been overwhelmingly, thank you. I mean, truly, they were grateful to have the information that they knew they would need to start this new system that we're dealing in. And so I didn't want the night to go by without letting you know how appreciative I am of what you've done for our staff and for our students. So, thank you.
Do you see why my quote yesterday was that sometimes Carson City feels like a Hallmark movie?
She's with the Nevada Appeal, and she was interviewing me yesterday, and I said, sometimes Carson City feels like a Hallmark movie because her question was, and I'll just paraphrase it, was, what about the teachers that weren't ready for it? Like, what happened? And I said, well, sometimes Carson City feels like a Hallmark movie, which I love Hallmark movies, but, and I said, because no one was going to let their colleague fail, and they just pulled them along, right? And they were like, don't worry about it, come with us. And we saw it in the in-person, we had hosted some in-seat with limited seats, Jim did, and then Mimi Laughlin at PDC. And there were grade levels, right? And I was like, she already knows how to do this, but yet she was, you know, one teacher was there, and I'm like, click on that, yep, do that, okay, yeah, no, go back. And so they just weren't going to let each other fail. And so I just think we couldn't be in a better place than Carson City, I totally agree.
President Walker, this is Jose Delfin, may I add to the question?
Sure.
Thank you, Trustee Walker, President Walker. As somebody who's run online virtual high school for over 4,000 kids in another district, I have to tell you what Carrie and Tasha and LeAnn and other teachers have done in a couple of weeks is nothing but a miracle because I know that when we trained our online teachers for our system down south, it took us an entire semester to train each teacher. So I can't express enough how much work and preparation and thoughtfulness has gone into all the work that has been flowing through curriculum and instruction and teaching and learning in our district. And I just wanted to add that because knowing what it takes to build content for other professionals, not just students, but for other teachers, is a whole different level altogether. And what our staff is able to pull off in just a short matter of time is just amazing. So I just wanted to share that out. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll go back to you, LeAnn.
Yes, I liked Carrie's thought about the Hallmark movie, and this is my 31st year in Carson City School District. So I am very always proud to represent Carson City School District. And I'd like to just do a shout out to Mr. Stokes, our district admin, our current school board and previous school boards, because this is my ninth year in this position as the Technology Integration Specialist. And I truly believe that we have been planning for this for many years now, and we are in such a great place as we were able to embark on this because we had super teachers like Mr. Wallace that nine years ago was a pioneer and stepped forward and said, you know what, I'd like to try having a class set of Chromebooks and let's see what we can do. And so I just want to say thank you and how appreciative I am to have had the opportunity to do all of these things. 27 of my 31 years have been in technology in Carson City School District. If you think about what technology was like in 1994, when Fritsch Elementary School started with the very first computer lab, and where we have been able to, you know, grow with the tech center at the high school and all of that. So thank you so much for all of your support over the years and to really, you know, build us to where we are today and how we were able, you know, to do what we did the last two weeks and that foundation that came before that.
So to move us on to our next agenda item, I just want to say we haven't forgotten our kids either. We do know that it takes a lot of building blocks to build a strong foundation, and we know that obviously our staff is one part of it. The next part is our students, being able to actually provide professional learning to our students on their tools, their digital tools and their resources, not just their curriculum and their subjects, but now we have to teach them how to use these tools as well. And LeAnn's right, we've been building to this for a long time, but, and then the next one we promise is going to be our parents. So it was our teachers first, and then emphasis on our students, and then next will be our parents, and we'll eventually get everyone where we need to be. In our Ed Services Department, we have kind of a motto, and it's, "Don't grow alone, intertwine your roots." It's based on something that Mr. Chad Hicks kind of found, that quote, and it's because redwoods, right, that grow to be, you know, taller than, you know, skyscrapers, and they typically only have roots that sink anywhere from six to 15 feet below the ground. So you say to yourself, how can this amazing tree, that literally some of them are so large you can drive a car through, right? How can that tree stand with only roots that go down six to 15 feet below the ground? And it's because they interlock their roots, they have a really massive root system that allows them to stand strong. So we talk about that in our department, about how we need to intertwine our roots, and we need to help each other grow really strong. And that's our whole district, that's from our superintendent, with our IT folks, with our principals, with our teachers, with our parapros, with our coordinators, et cetera, to be able to help everyone stand strong and grow strong. So I'm excited again because now we're going to shift focus because we're going to help our kids grow strong and stand tall as well. And we know that it's not just the tools themselves, but it's also an organizational issue that we have to figure out how to help our teachers organize all their resources as well as now our students organize resources and access them. So LeAnn's going to walk you through what our IT department has put together along with LeAnn's input, et cetera, on how we can do that for our kids.
So as I mentioned before with the educator dashboard, the student dashboard, the student dashboard is what is coming up on every student Chromebook. The four schools that have their own district website, it will also be showing as well. It is wonderful to have my own son in the district because I'm always using him as an example or his account. So I wanted you to see the true student experience, so he's, it's actually logged in as my son, Andrew. Notice that up in the upper left-hand corner here, Tasha mentioned this before, this bookmark, CCSD bookmarks, the students have access to that as well as the staff do. The great thing about this is if the student didn't have their Chromebook for some reason and they were able to work on a different computer, all they have to do is log into the Chrome browser, and then everything logs in for them, and then they have access to all of these resources. These, the extensions that are all listed up here, and any of the other things that they have pinned or bookmarked. So they can access this student dashboard, and he is a senior at Carson High School, so we also have the senators now also bookmarked in there. So if we just take a little tour of the dashboard itself, Clever is our wonderful friend, and sometimes it causes us a lot of problems, but for the most part, it is where we need to go. Clever actually automates the secure transfer of student rosters. So what that means is, the applications that we have, they will actually take the rosters from Infinite Campus and bring all of the student names in and the information, so the teachers do not have to enter that by themselves. And the other great thing about this is, the majority of the resources use a tool that is single sign-on, meaning as soon as they click on one of these, it automatically logs them into their account. So less passwords, more secure, it's a great, great resource. Many of the resources are the same in Clever as well as on the dashboard, but the difference is that the students can log in using Clever. The other highlight that I wanted to share with you are that each teacher, if they choose to, they can create their own Clever page. And this is wonderful for all age level of students because, especially for our littlest learners, if the teachers don't want them necessarily to get confused with some of the things that they want to focus on, they can set up their own Clever page and put their own resources in. They can pin the district resources, but they can also pick some of the other resources. If you think about that 181 that are available for them to use, if they choose to use some of those resources, they could be pinned. My son is in NJROTC, so you can see all these great resources that Mr. Ingram has put on his Clever page. So then you can also see all of the pillar applications that they have access to, biology, honors biology, and this is awesome too because depending on what grade level or school the students are at, we also have HMH inter-reading icons for our elementary kids. Well, we don't want them to have to be trying to figure out if they're clicking on inter-reading or honors biology. So obviously, that is appropriate for the grade level. So all of these, once again, the single sign-on is what we like to see, there are a few that still aren't using that technology, but the best part is the majority of them are and using that through our student information system with Infinite Campus. So that's kind of an overview of what Clever is. But let's go back out to the dashboard. Notice that a few of these icons, as I mentioned before, were also on the Clever dashboard. They don't have to get into Clever to access them, but they're there as well. I mentioned digital citizenship before. Once again, we're, we want our students to be responsible users of technology. Common Sense Education is the resource that we use in all of the grade levels, the Passport Compass and the, it's called Digital Bytes, that's new for high school. So some of, some of these lessons, well, actually by the end of the year, all of the lessons will have been gone through on our Mondays. So the teachers are picking and choosing what they're going to be using for these on those Mondays. The students also have access, as I had mentioned before, with our secondary students can reset their own passwords. It also allows the teachers to reset their passwords here. We have some tips and tricks as far as the Chromebooks go because Chromebooks are a little bit different kind of a computer than just a regular laptop, whether it's a Mac or a Windows device. One of the keys that's different on a Chromebook is this refresh key. And so a great way, if the Chromebook for some reason will not boot up, and these are great resources for our parents as well, is to press that refresh and power button simultaneously. And so that's a great visual to help them with that. We have some great tutorials for the Chromebook itself. I would highly recommend that our parents also take advantage of these. If people like keyboard shortcuts, there's a lot of different shortcuts for the keyboard on the Chromebook. Control Alt question mark will get you to an on-screen keyboard shortcut, and so all of the different keyboard shortcuts will come up. The Chromebook Handbook is here, and once again, the responsible and acceptable use policy is listed here as well. So Mrs. Crossman, I wanted to get back to Google Classroom to address that question. The platform itself, parents cannot join the classroom, but teachers can send you an invite into your email, so you will get weekly updates.
You can change that to daily because sometimes kids don't do things within the week, and you don't know that it's missing until it's too late. So you can change your setting to get daily notifications?
Super. And if you haven't received, if you haven't received that information from one of your children's teachers, please request that.
There are some FERPA guidelines that come into play when it comes to parents accessing things in Google Classroom, for instance. It has to be very restricted to specifically what your child has done, obviously. So we can't invite folks outside of that classroom to come into the classroom. There is guidance that Raymond, our IT director, actually put together for teachers as well on what the ins and outs are of recording Zoom recordings, for instance, and posting those to make sure that we're FERPA compliant. So there's just, there's a lot of pieces that go into play to have, again, the system. And it's always the details that get us, that we have to continue to work out little by little in order to get it to really flow smoothly. So we're pretty good, we're in a good spot, I think we're about 90% there. Well, the 10% is getting everyone trained and getting everyone understanding how to access those tools and getting our teachers to provide some consistency of how to access those tools. Interestingly enough, one of the things that we actually sent out was also a YouTube video on how to even structure Google Classroom because it's just a tool, and teachers can set it up myriad different ways, and then it becomes a challenge for a student and/or a parent to navigate that. So even sending out, here's some tips and tricks for actually structuring your Google Classroom for how you can set up assignments, et cetera. So we are working through those very specific detailed type items. But I'm happy to say, if that's the feedback we're getting, that means rest of it, we're doing fairly well on that, we're actually being able to really hit those fine details, and that's, it's not a bad thing.
And I guess one of my other questions is, with the Google Classroom, when they have assignments in there, sometimes they were asked to add pictures to it, and hopefully it'll be better this year that the younger kids actually have their Chromebooks, but you can't email, like my kids can't email a document that they're working on to me to print off at home because you can't email outside of Google. And I can't, if we take pictures of something and put it in, I can't send it to them to their Google account because I don't have a school account. So I don't know how we make it easier for parents to do that, when there's supplemental material that needs to go in. And I guess maybe it won't be as big a deal if all of the kids have their district-issued devices, but that was a complication that we had during the spring was, oh, I can't access that, this, to make the, you know, get this, like, I can take a picture with my phone, but I can't get it to you.
Correct. So now that every student has a district.
Then they'll have to take pictures, I guess, with their Chromebook and keep it all in there. And I still am, and as a parent, trying to figure out how I can access each of their, you know, just to kind of get an idea. Some of them are better than others at keeping track of everything, some are not. So it does, I don't know, it's still, it's a lot to track down as a parent.
And the, each student has a valid email, but exactly what you said, the elementary and middle school students cannot email outside the district. They can email each other with the same domain and the teacher domains, but outside, it's not set up that way. For the high school level though, they can.
Schools have never needed to email me, but I didn't, I didn't know that they could do that.
Yeah, we have that open for scholarships or, you know, outside organizations that may need to be contacted.
Okay.
LeAnn, I do have a question.
Leanne, I do have a question. For our Spanish-speaking parents, is there a magic button that they can click on and help them translate the information so that they can help their children?
Well, using the Google Translate within the Chrome browser, that would be able to translate as many of the, of the materials in the websites that, that can use that Google Translate feature. In addition to many of the applications like things within Google Docs or other, within the Google Apps suite, there are also resources that they can use. So we'll make sure, I work very closely with Dr. Austin, that, that they are, that's communicated out on how they can do that.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
One of the main tools that we purchased this year, or that I think is going to resolve some of those connectivity issues for our teachers is Kami. I don't know if it's pronounced Cami or Kami, but it's K-A-M-I. And again, that's a tool that's a Google add-on that allows teachers to, as I said, make fillable PDFs of, of like resources and materials so that students then at home can fill them in and send it in without it ever having to be paper transferred back and forth. So that is something that we did professional training on for our teachers to access and be able to utilize that tool. And then again, having each of our students having access to a Chromebook, that should help with some of those privacy pieces. But it is imperative that we keep those privacy pieces in place because we are talking about children, the vast majority of them under 18 years of age. So we have to adhere to digital privacy as well as FERPA guidelines, et cetera.
I was wondering, for the younger kids, the first and second graders, how much time are they going to spend on the computer to be able to complete their schoolwork?
Well, that's probably going to depend on how much time their parents allow them to spend on their Chromebooks, their devices. What we've recommended to our teachers is really to, to scaffold that up based on grade level of the student. So for instance, at Kinder, you, you shouldn't expect your kindergarten to spend more than an hour at best on the remote day and directly on screen time. There will be, there should be activities that go home that the student can do either with paper, pencil, crayon, that kind of stuff. But screen time shouldn't be more than an hour. You know, first grade, maybe at max, hour and 15, hour and a half max, probably still closer to that hour. So we figure at best for an elementary school child that they shouldn't be doing more than two and a half hours, even at the fourth or fifth grade level of screen time on the remote learning days. For our secondary students, their day will resemble their remote days, or if they're full-time online, their days will resemble what a regular, you know, six and a half hour, seven-hour instructional day looks like, six and a half hours without the lunch put in there, or a little over six hours. So, so, I mean, it's, there, there can be supplemental, I shouldn't say that it's, I'm not going to be necessarily sitting and staring at my screen as a secondary student because there would be writing, there would be math, et cetera. But the, the amount of time, I think there's been a perception issue in that some of our families who are, have chosen the remote learning environment, I think are thinking that, oh, this is, you know, only two, two and a half, three hours of school a day. No, the intention is that school, that students are spending a full school day, whether they're at home, remote learning, or they're in seat. Now, what that looks like, like I said, we're trying to minimize screen time. We don't want kids glued to a, a computer for that entire time. But the amount of time dedicated to schoolwork should be equivalent to what it would be if a student was in seat.
Yeah, I, I talked to a person today whose child just came into the district and they attended a different system last year. And they were kind of complaining, I guess, or commenting on that their eighth grader is, yeah, eighth grader, is going to be on a computer six, six and a half hours a day, which the student wasn't used to because he'd had a different, I guess, system last year. So that's why I was asking, thanks.
Well, it's interesting, I think. You know, there's something to be said about how much screen time you have, but I can tell you, if I were to grab my, any of my kids, now they're getting older, and I looked at their screen time versus their screen time, they spend a lot more than eight hours a day looking at a screen. So this is not something foreign to them. So I don't think we're asking them, I don't think we're asking too much of these kids.
I think it was funny. I was hoping you all caught on to the Clever piece too. I don't know about you, but I have probably 50 passwords associated with either my personal accounts or my school accounts. So just even the password piece for our kids was huge. So it's really, that's another tool. Having them rostered, what we call roster through Clever is so important because it gives them a single sign-on. Otherwise, could you imagine? I mean, we've had a lot of phone calls-
I can, because I was trying to link into the HMH and we needed a password that we didn't have. And then my other son told me about Clever. I'm like, what is this Clever? Like, literally Monday was the first I'd ever heard of Clever. And I had a kid who did it before who could do it. But I'm sitting here thinking, there are parents who were starting this, who don't have a kid who knows, who are, are still trying to work from home too and didn't have the time that I invested in doing that. And it, it just, it, it, it's good, but I do think we really do need to let the parents have some training in this too.
Laurel, you're depressing me. I'm going to have a 12-year-old at home that I'm responsible for at school this year, so not looking forward to it.
Something else with Clever that I forgot to mention, thank you, Mrs. Fuson, for talking about that. For our youngest learners, even typing in the first password to get into the Chromebook can be a real challenge. And so I brought this as a little visual. We also have the Clever badges, which are these QR codes. So each of our young learners, when they went to the schools last week to get their Chromebooks, they also picked up their Clever badge. So when they open up their Chromebook, the camera automatically launches, they scan their QR code, and that logs them in because it's specific to their name, and then it logs them into their credentials. So we have that set up district-wide for all of our Kinder, first and second grade students.
Good. I saw that in a classroom in, at Fremont last year, and I was like, that's a great idea. So I'm glad it's district-wide.
Yes.
We've come a long way from Mr. Greenley and Edmodo. I've got to tell you, I thought it was weird having him in my living room at 10 o'clock, but this is just amazing, the leaps and bounds we've had.
That Pathways project that Mr. Greenley and Mr. Ma did, you know, that was like 16 years ago. They were real trailblazers at that time too for that state project. And our Nevada Ready 21 initiative that, you know, we've had in the district for several years with that grant, so many opportunities.
Well, Leanne, I think there's a lot of us on the panel who would like one of those QR codes for our own computers.
Well, and I have to say again, thank you to Mr. Stokes and his vision and the board and your vision because without our wonderful IT department here and the amount of resources that we actually as a district put into IT, right, it, it takes, it takes manpower. That's the other piece. I mean, it's not just all of this in the background that these folks do. I mean, they have to go in and handle all the backside, and then Leanne gets to handle all the training of the front end of it. And then we also have the Chromebooks that will break and have to have repairs, et cetera, et cetera, to put it all together. So without the, having the resources that we have, we wouldn't be able to do it as well.
Well, thank you both for all of your work. I appreciate it.
How are the Chromebooks holding up? Raymond, do you know?
Our, our Chromebooks are holding up really well, actually. Our break rate is, has dropped, believe it or not, after we removed the protective coverings from them. Not sure why that is, but yeah, they've, I guess the kids are maybe being a little bit more careful with them, knowing that they might be a little bit more fragile, but they seem to be holding up really well. And so no concerns on that front.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was good. Thanks. Thank you, guys.
Next item on the agenda is informational presentation of Board Docs, a new platform for CSD board policy and regulations. This is for discussion only. Raymond Maderos. Do you mean Raymond?
Hello, President Walker, members of the board. Let me, give me just a moment to switch screens here.
Okay, so Board Docs, we put that in place to help out our, our, our school community. We wanted to take what we've put together with our PDF documents, all of our policies, regs and forms, and make that accessible and more ADA compliant. We wanted to be able to convert that to multiple languages to accommodate, you know, a variety of languages, whatever our, our parents speak. And so to access that, you're going to go to the district website like I have up here under School Board, and then Policies and Regulations. And you're going to notice that this looks a lot different than it did in the past. And you can see a great picture here of the best school board in the state, in, in the country, excuse me. And here we have contact information for each, each one of the school board members, including a Contact All. And over here, under our Board Policies, you have a description of Board Policies. And then note that the P suffix, we'll get into this here in a moment, but the P suffix represents a policy. And then under Administrative Regulations and Forms, there's a description with a R suffix for Regulation, and then an F suffix for Forms. So that really helps us separate out each of those documents and makes it really easy for our school community to search through them. So under our Sections area, we have a list of all of our sections. And, and these are just descriptions. When I go in, you can actually see them all and interact with them. So I'm going to scroll up and click on Policies up in the top right corner. And you'll see a list of all the sections here, like I just mentioned. Under each section, you have a variety of policies and regulations and forms. They're all in numerical order. And the great thing about this is you can search for any keyword that you would like. So let me type in sunscreen, and you'll get all of the policies and regulations that have the word sunscreen in it. So it takes a lot of the mystery out of searching for policies and regulations that we've kind of had in the past, which is, I've gotten a lot of positive feedback on that. So sunscreen is just one option. Technology will obviously bring up a whole lot of more, you know, a whole lot more policies, which you'll see listed here, and you can click on any one of those. And you'll see the, in this case, the policy listed over on, on the right side in the pane. You can print directly out of here. You can share the link by copying it and pasting it into any sharing platform of your choice. And another really awesome feature of this is that you can right-click in any white space, choose Translate. And we're going to choose another language here. And you can see there is a list of many different languages. So pick your choice. I'm going to choose Spanish and then Translate. And you can see the whole document, the whole, the whole website is now all in Spanish. So that makes it really nice for our Spanish-speaking folks, or really anybody. I mean, it'll do Vietnamese, Russian, whatever you speak, it'll translate too. So that was one of the main reasons of, of switching platforms is really to make it, you know, really easy for our school community to find policies and regs that are associated with whatever, whatever their interest is. Like I mentioned, you can do the, you know, type in the, in the search, any keyword, and it'll find all of the associated policies, regs and forms, so you don't have to, to hunt those down anymore. And that is pretty much Board Docs in a nutshell. Do you guys have any questions?
No, but I think that that's amazing tool. Thank you.
So-
So our next item is-
Wait, before we leave that, I just have, so we know a lot of districts that have Board Docs for their meetings. Is that something that we can tie to this, or that's just, this is just strictly for policies and regulations?
At the current time, it's set up for policies and regs, but absolutely, meetings can be embedded inside of this system as well. It's an added feature, so just an additional cost and some configuration, but it, it can be done.
All right. Informational presentation to introduce and demonstrate the district's new school home communication platform, Parent Square. This is for discussion only. Raymond Maderos.
Thank you, President Walker and members of the board. Raymond Maderos for the record again. Let me put this in presentation mode. All right, so Parent Square, we've heard quite a bit about Parent Square tonight with Mr. Walker's, I'm sorry, Mr. Wallace's comments. Sorry, adjusting for our Zoom folks. All right. So Parent Square is our primary communication platform this year, and we really took the feedback of our school community to heart. And what they, what they were asking for was a unified platform that all school communication can go through. So we didn't have the multiple, a variety of communication channels that we did when the schools shut down. So teachers were using ClassDojo, Remind, Seesaw, Blooms. At the school level, they were often using Remind and School Messenger. And at the district level, School Messenger, Remind was being used as well. So it was kind of confusing in all aspects, as far as what system to check for your information and where you're going for what. So we put Parent Square in place, and as we move through the, as we move through the slides, you know, this, this word involve every parent, you'll be able to connect the dots and kind of see all the different ways that we're communicating with parents. One of the ways to involve every parent is to be able to provide the information in multiple different languages and to be able to communicate in the parent's preferred method. So whether that be text, email, phone, or through app notifications. So this was kind of a representation of what communication was kind of like before we switched over to Parent Square. As you can see, there's a lot going on there. There's lines everywhere, multiple different platforms in there, and it's kind of confusing as far as, you know, what communication is going where. So you have things going out email, you have things going out through text, our SIS site, through our website, calls. So in order to clean this up, we put Parent Square in the middle. So now this is kind of what we look like here. We have all of our, all of our parents on the right side, and this is two-way communication, by the way, so we have communication in both directions. And then on the left side, you can see all of our school staff. So it really cleaned up that, that whole process. And I'll go over some of the features of, of Parent Square real quick. So some of the features include classroom school and district communication. So we have communication going out through all different levels using the same platform. Teachers can embed in, really the district or, or the schools as well, can embed forms and permission slips into their Parent Square posts. Parent-teacher conferences can be scheduled through Parent Square. Parents can excuse absences through the Parent Square app, and those absence responses go to our front offices at our schools. So then they input that into our student information system. We could put, there's an event calendar and an RSVP option in there. So we can put all of our events in a single calendar, which then gets pushed to the parent app. And the great thing about it is if you have students that are at different schools, you get multiple calendars and you can switch between your students and see what's going on at each of their schools without having to jump to multiple different places. Volunteering and sign-ups, you can also do that through Parent Square. You can embed polls in the posts, and there's an analytics dashboard, which is, which is really cool. I was just talking to Lee about that earlier, and we were going over the analytics for his school. And you can really see the, what the teachers are doing at the classroom level and what kind of parent engagement is going on there. So you get a, a real good global perspective of what's going on. Some of the other things that, some of the other features of Parent Square is real-time translation, and this is a really cool tool. Because what- translation, and this is a really cool tool, because what this does is if a teacher sends out a message in English, it will convert it to whatever the native language is of the parent, or whatever language they have set in Infinite Campus as their preferred language. So if it's Spanish, it'll go in Spanish. If it's Vietnamese, it'll go out in Vietnamese. And it's transparent to the teacher and the parent. So it goes out in English, it's received in Vietnamese, for example. When they respond in Vietnamese, it converts back to English. So the teacher then has an English copy of it. So that is, that is a really cool feature. And then, of course, it's two-way communication, so we have a way for our parents to communicate back and forth with our teachers through a single unified app. And then Student Square is another piece of Parent Square. And what that does is allow our schools, our teachers, and our district to be able to communicate directly with students as well. So it's all under one umbrella. And this is kind of an example here of a teacher writing in English, and it being received in Spanish on the parent's phone. One of the other cool features is the emergency alerts. You can put, so there's templates in there. Inside of Parent Square, an administrator can craft the wording however they want for a lockdown, for example, and with two clicks, they could send out an emergency alert. They could do this from their phone. So assuming the building's on fire, they don't have to be sitting in their office in front of their computer, typing in an emergency alert to send off. They could do it from the safety of the parking lot, or somewhere outside of that burning building, and still keep our parents informed. And then Real Reach reports, we'll go over some of those in a moment, but the Real Reach reports are great. It really gives insight into how, if those communications are received or not on the other end. So if they're not received, it gives us an idea of if we need to contact that parent and update their parent contact information in Infinite Campus, in order to be able to communicate with them. So I'm happy to report that our district is 99%, or our parents are 99% contactable. So 99% of our parents are receiving our messages. So the other 1% we're working on, we'll get those sorted out. Here's an example of the reach and deliverability report. So we have 82% of our, 82% of our parents are receiving messages through email. They have emails, I'm sorry, in the system, and 82% have opted to receive emails as well. And you can see over on the text side, right over here, you have 99% of parents have phones, and 20% of those have opted to receive text messages. And then on the app side, 25% of our parents have the app, and 22% of those with the app are receiving app notifications. And that's really, the reason why the, the reason why there's a difference there, 25 and 22%, is because it's really the parent's preference. If they choose not to receive text messages, they can shut it off. If they choose not to receive app notifications, they can shut that off. And the same with email. All right, the other important piece is data privacy. So Parent Square is fully compliant with FERPA and COPA, so the, both of these federal privacy laws, we are complying with both of these, with Student Square. So we, you know, we know that data privacy is a big concern for our families, and we take that very seriously. And so we want to make sure that our student information is safe. And then I have a video here that kind of summarizes what I kind of talked about, and I'm hoping this works.
Congratulations. If you are watching this video, it means that your school is using Parent Square. You may be asking yourself, what is Parent Square? Parent Square is a safe, secure, and modern approach to communication and collaboration between school and home. It is a central hub for all districts, school, grade level, class, and group notifications about your children. Better still, school communication comes right to your fingertips in a way that is convenient to you, whether it be email, text, or app notification. You will also receive texts or voice calls for urgent alerts and reminders. You should have received an invitation from Parent Square via email or text asking you to activate your account. You can also request another activation invitation with the email or phone number that you provided to your child's school at parentsquare.com or on the app. If you don't remember the information on file at your child's school, please fill out your join-your-school form to send a request to your child's school to add you to Parent Square today. Parent Square also has easy-to-use apps for iOS and Android phones that can be downloaded from the Apple App Store or Google Play Store. Once logged in, you'll see your custom Parent Square feed. This page shows all information related to your children, including any school-wide, grade level, class, or group-specific information. No more need to search through emails, schools, or multiple websites to find important information. Prefer text messages over email? No problem. From your account page, you can update your notification preferences, so information is coming how and when you'd like it. Language settings can also be changed, so information is coming in your preferred language. Parent Square is great at increasing collaboration and helps you get involved in your school communities. You will automatically receive information from the school office and your kids' classes and any groups you or your kids belong to. You may also join a public group within the school. You can participate with just a click of a button. Parent Square allows you to fill out a form quickly. No more handouts and permission slips lost at the bottom of backpacks. You can sign up to bring an item or RSVP for an event. You can also comment on and appreciate a post. Please give these generously to show your school community support. Using Parent Square, you can also chat directly with a teacher or staff member using our messages feature. This keeps all communication in one place without the need of additional directories or email addresses. We also have a personalized calendar to keep you up to date with school events, and our photo library stores all photos that have been shared over the course of the year. Thank you for joining Parent Square. Register your account, download the app, and start interacting with your school community today.
So, as you can see, there's a lot to it. It is, it has been really awesome to see the teachers using it. They have, we've, so when I checked this morning, we had 1,000 posts already that have gone out to parents, individual posts. We had about 900 comments back on those posts, so the two-way communication is working great. And there's been some unintended uses of it, which is, which has been really cool. Teachers have created grade-level PLC groups, and they're collaborating amongst each other inside of it as well, so I've noticed that going on. And so, yeah, that's been, that's been a really neat thing to see happen. So going back to the slide deck here, I just wanted to let you guys know that staff training happened on August 13th. All of our staff were trained on one of the PD days that Carrie and team put together. And then, parent training, so on-demand training is available on our district website. And all of our schools have kind of been pushing our parents over that direction. They've done a great job doing that. So we have a lot of information on our district website for our parents. Public notification went out on August 20th. It went out to all Northern Nevada news outlets, our district's social media account, and to our district website as well. That's all I have. So that is Parent Square in a nutshell. You guys have some, any questions?
Yeah, Raymond, I have a question. This is great. I think this is, you know, I feel like we're, you know, I feel like Ron Swarzak now. My hands just started going. I mean, I really think we're modern now. We're, you know, this is where we probably should be. But, so you have a teacher, and they have their parents that are divided basically evenly. Some want to get emails, some want to get, you know, info through app, through, you know, through text. And the teacher likes to use email. Is it, maybe I missed that, but they can do everything through their computer, and it goes out in those different formats? Or how does this work for the teacher?
Yeah, so on the teacher's side, when they send a message, it will go out in the parent's preferred communication method. So they'll send it out, they'll type it in, it'll go out through text messaging, through app notification, through email, however the parent has it set up.
Yeah, so the teacher just does, basically does it one way, and once you set it all up, it goes out those different ways to the.
Yes.
Parents. Okay, that's slick.
Raymond, I just want to say thank you so much. I mean, this is extremely impressive. So this is going to help with the communication from, you know, with the teachers and Spanish-speaking parents, and all, and like you said, you know, in any language. So I'm extremely impressed. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well, and Stacy was over there asking me, does it work? And I will say, a tool is as good as those who are utilizing it, because I'm getting a lot of information from the elementary school from this. I have not had as much from the high school or the middle school. And I don't know if it's, I mean, they're kind of busy this week, so that could explain.
I was going to say, it's like day two.
Yeah. But also, I was like, oh, maybe I need to go back and make sure that my settings for them are set to receive it, but I'm getting information mainly from one of the teachers, but the elementary school is definitely doing it. And so it probably just depends on how much they want to use the tool that is given to them.
Yeah, I've been using it for the last week and a half. I got an email to join. I joined on my phone and my PC. It was really easy. And I've been getting messages from mostly just one teacher so far, at the high school, the band director, Nick Jox, and he uses it daily. We get updates constantly. I also get him on the email as well. I get an email, and then that prompts me, because that's my preferred usually. I'm old, so I like email. Anyway, I think it's been great, and thank you for this. Appreciate it.
So, it kind of looks like a Facebook page, from those of us who don't have it. Is there any way we could sell advertising to make up the deficit that we're going to have?
Yeah, I wish. At this time, unfortunately, it does not support advertising. We could certainly post, we can certainly post on there and pin it to the top, I guess.
All right, Richard?
I think Stacy brought up a good point about the cost. Is this something, I know it's not free, and it's probably quite expensive, but I'm guessing on that. It's a heck of a tool, and I want to keep it. But do we have the budget to be able to continue to support it?
I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Feeling for Sustainability.
Thank you, Raymond. Thank you, Trustee Varan, Ray J. Feeling for the record. So the cost of Parent Square, I believe, was in the $22,000. So that, fortunately, was something that was able to be paid through the, what the city has come to us with CARES funds. So that was a really significant benefit, one of the many, with the city really prioritizing the school district with this. So, in the long run, I mean, clearly, we'll have the year to test it out, and it's paid for, and we'll see if it's something that we find value in keeping. I just, I honestly just don't know. It is really, I don't want to take us way off agenda topic, but I think we'll have, hopefully, a better idea in the coming months. But it's just, the crystal ball is very COVID-y right now, so.
To clarify, it's $22,000 a year?
Actually, is it per year? Okay. I didn't know if that was in, like, a setup cost or anything. Okay.
That's not bad, really, for this kind of tool, I don't think, and hopefully, we can find a way to continue to fund it.
I totally agree, so I would totally appreciate your support in keeping it going. I'll have a bake sale if I have to.
Tell you banner ads.
I'll just, I'll comment as a parent, as Mrs. Crossman was saying, Trustee Crossman, my apologies. It's been fantastic. I mean, the communication already happening with all of my kids' teachers has been just, it's amazing how fast it's actually happened. So I think it's great.
Well, I get them too, because I'm a guardian of a child in school, but, so I think it's been really helpful for, for our family.
Thank you. I think it's, there's a lot of communicating we could do with families, so that's always good, especially in these times. Thank you.
And that's really been the intent of all this. It aligns well with our family, you know, engagement goal that we have for our district. And so what we really want to do is boost parent engagement, and to do that, we had to communicate multiple languages, like I mentioned, multiple languages. We had to have two-way communication with our families, and we had to get information out timely. And so it's still relevant, and I think this platform is really something that allows us to do that.
One more question, if I can. Will we have follow-up training for our teachers with this? I know, like, your previous presentation, if the information's there, they can go back and whatnot, but it seems like, you know, for teachers that maybe are still a little leery, and, oh my God, I'm jumping into the school year. Is there a chance for them to revisit it, or how does that work?
So all of our professional development sessions were recorded this year, so it's all on-demand. They can go back, revisit it, rewind, play over and over.
All right, Raymond, you're off the hot seat. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda. This is for possible action.
I move that Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve the consent agenda as submitted.
We have a motion by Joe, second by Richard. Any discussion from the trustees? Seeing none? Any public comment?
Seeing no public comment.
All right, seeing no public comment, I'll call a question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. See, I think you all forgot what you're doing here, because we haven't had to vote tonight. Keeping you on your toes. Next item on the agenda is informational items. This is for discussion only. So do we have any questions for Mr. Stokes or staff about those?
With the PLC meeting, is that going to be a Zoom meeting or an in-person meeting, or we're going to decide as it gets closer?
I would like for us to get a little closer, to see if we can meet in person. I'm not sure how easy it would be to have that particular meeting as we break into our individual goals via Zoom. So I'm happy to take any suggestions that you have.
Item number 14, requests for future agenda topics.
We, like, we just discussed with AJ, we had Mrs. Fuchon also say she's purchased this and purchased that. I'd kind of like a recap of the things we've had, the impact that the on-distance learning has, and what the CARES Act has done, and where we, I know it's muddy, but I'd just kind of like to know where we're at. I know it's not going to be, you know, it's that moving, it's a moving number, but if we could just have some feel for it.
So you, so just to clarify, you're asking for a summary of how we've used the CARES funding and additional tools for, to support online learning?
Yeah, I guess, yeah, and just that we, we know there's been some impacts that we haven't seen in any of the budgets, but I don't know what those impacts are. I don't know how, plus, we've had the impacts of, of the children leaving, or not the remote learning. I kind of want to know the moving numbers, just so we shouldn't, in two weeks or a month, should have a better feel for it, and just so we, we're just kept in the loop, so I kind of know where we're going.
Are you, would you be okay with, typically, I think, when school gets going, they do the enrollment update. Are you okay with them doing it separately? Are you wanting one presentation with both?
No, they can do it separately. I just want to know where we are financially and what the CARES Act did do, because that was a huge thing for the city to include us in there, where other cities didn't get that. So I just kind of want to know that part.
Just to clarify, if I may ask, so we certainly can do the enrollment piece. Are you also asking for costs of Chromebooks, software, programming?
Just additional costs, just the additional costs that we didn't, when we did the budget last, we didn't have any of this in there. So just kind of want to know.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That clarifies it for me.
You know, where we are, bottom line, because there, I'm sure there's been savings that we've had, but, you know, we don't usually amend the budget till December. I don't really want to wait till December to find out that we're in a bigger hole, is all. I just kind of, and then I own, I know it's a moving target, because there's different stuff for every day, but.
If, AJ Feeling for the record, if I could offer, I think, just simply, an update on enrollment and budget impact in the, in the new school year. and budget impact in the, in the new school year, and I can encapsulate, I think, all of that.
And some graphs, of course. We haven't had graphs tonight.
Now you're pushing it, Stacy. Any other future agenda topics? Alright, seeing none. We will adjourn the meeting at 9:30. Thank you, everyone.